Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Susan Bransfield. I'm the first selectwoman in the town of Portland. And to start the meeting, I'll read the call of the meeting. So this is a legal notice of the public hearing of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, August 27, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Portland Library, 20 Freestone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut. Pursuant to Section 7-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes and Section 503(c) and 506 of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen of the town of Portland, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 27, 2019, at 7:30 PM at the Public Library, Mary Flood Room, 20 Freestone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut, regarding the proposed purchase of real property located at 222, 230, and 248 Brownstone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut. At the hearing, all interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. As of this date, I don't have any written communications to read tonight. This particular call of the meeting was dated at Portland, Connecticut, the fifth day of August 2019. Attest Susan Bransfield for selectwoman. So this is a public hearing of the Board of Selectmen. It's the second public hearing. We also had two site visits last June at the property site. And the purpose of this meeting is to present information regarding the proposed purchase and also to hear your feedback and/or questions and comments. I'd like to introduce the Board of Selectmen, and perhaps they can just raise their hand when I call their name. Selectmen Lou Paire, Selectman Mike Pelton, Selectman Jim Tripp, Selectman Ralph Zampano, and I believe Selectman Rick Shar and Selectman Ben Serb will be joining us shortly. We also have tonight some guests that will be presenting information to us. Selectman Jim Tripp has provided for us a drone video and some pictures of the land. Andy Ives from Langen Engineering is here. Andy did the survey of the property. And Amy Valencourt from Ty &amp; Bond is here. She is our Licensed Environmental Professional on this project. Mary Dickerson from the Economic Development Planning Office is here tonight, as well as at least one member of the Economic Development Commission. Elwyn Guild, our chairman, is here. And I believe Kitch Sernicki is here as well. I don't know if there's other members, but as we proceed through the evening, perhaps. I'm sorry. Frank Weniski is here as well. Thanks, Frank. Anybody else from Economic Development Commission? Okay. We also have Mark Lewis, who's going to talk about liability protection program that is afforded to the municipality from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And Mark Lewis will be speaking and giving a synopsis of those programs as well. Procedurally, for tonight's meeting, if you came in and you wish to speak, you can sign up at Sharon Hoy's desk. She's our recording secretary for tonight. And if I call your name later and you don't want to speak, you can just say pass. But if you want to speak, your name isn't on there, you'll need to just raise your hand. We ask you to sign up because it helps when we do the record, that we know the proper spelling of your name. Also procedurally, after this public hearing, there will be a town meeting and vote that will be held on September 4, 2019, at 7:30 PM at the Brownstone Intermediate School Auditorium at 314 Main Street here in Portland. The reason we have to have a town meeting is that whenever we purchase property that's valued at more than $10,000, we need to have a town meeting vote. Previous to these public hearings, we did send the Planning and Zoning Commission a letter from the Board of Selectmen and asked for their review. It's under 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to get their opinion as to whether this purchase is in keeping with the 2016 adopted Plan of Conservation and Development. And they affirmed that it is unanimously, so we have that acknowledgement from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are not planning, as a municipality, to borrow any money for the purchase of this property. When we had talked about this last year, we had anticipated the possibility of bonding for this project. There is no need. There is sufficient funds within our savings for land acquisition accounts, so there is no need for any additional taxation or any additional borrowing. So we'll go into some details associated with finances in a few minutes. I just want to give you a brief history. Mary Dickerson's going to go into a little bit more of the planning aspects of this proposed purchase, but I'm going to go over some of the timeline, how we came to be here in 2019. In 2013, we commissioned and paid for a Phase 1 environmental review of these properties. These properties had sat dormant since about 2008, and we were interested in seeing if we could do a historical review and an analysis of what might be environmentally present on these properties. The properties at the time had been vacant, as I said, since about 2008, 2010. And Mr. John Beletti of Connecticut Tire &amp; Asphalt had owned these properties and taken great care of them. Unfortunately, Mr. Beletti died unexpectedly and with no will. There's been a difficulty in terms of some of the communications between the town and his estate. Originally, his 90-plus-year-old mother inherited the properties, and then subsequently she passed away, and a nephew owns and is the executor of the estate, and he lives in West Virginia. As I explained at the last public hearing, it becomes difficult when you are negotiating not only the purchase price, but also some of the aspects of the land, when you're going through the attorney for the owner. And we've been able to do that. It's been a little bit slower than perhaps we might like, but we've been able to work very well with the estate of Mr. Beletti. Hi, Rick. Nice to see you. Rick Shar. Yep, that's fine. In February of 2018, we had a public hearing. Some of you may have attended, on the pending purchase of the property. And at that time, we discussed and went into some detail associated with an oil pipeline that had been installed from the manifold, which is in the property of further south. It's owned by Ed Balargeron, and some of you may be familiar with that property. And it runs through his property and enters Brownstone Avenue. There's an easement that the town gave the port oil back in the early '80s. And then it ends at the Blue Tanks on 248 Brownstone Avenue. When we realized that the pipeline was owned by 248, as far as an easement to that property, we worked with the seller, and he subsequently removed the oil, thousands of gallons, in that pipeline, and Amy will go into that in a little more detail. And we asked them to also test the pipeline for its integrity, which was done by a company named Cortech, a professional company, that went in and inspected and put in nitrogen, which is an inert gas, and put it in at 50 pounds per square inch to determine its integrity, to make sure there were no leaks. And over the course of one, two, and more days, they tested the pipe and determined that none of the pressure was decreased, indicating that there is no leaks in the pipe. So that's good news. Getting back to some of the environmental reviews that have been done by Ty &amp; Bond, I mentioned the Phase 1 that the town paid for. And then we subsequently, through application to the State Department of Economic and Community Development, we applied for and received a $200,000 investigation grant that allowed us to go out to bid. We hired Ty &amp; Bond, and they were the successful bidders for that project. Many, many borings have been done on this land. Many, many analyses have been done in terms of what is on top of the land, what is under the land, and what is in the soils. And Amy Valencourt will provide us with a synopsis of that. The concerns that are present are primarily petroleum-based products, and we have worked very closely with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, as well as the Department of Economic and Community Development. The reports are up in the front of the room, so Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, that goes into the plan for the remediation, is available for your review either tonight or at any other time. We're happy to share that with you. In 2016, once the Phase 1, 2, and 3 were nearly completed, we applied to the State Department of Environmental -- excuse me, State Department of Economic and Community Development. And we were very successful in receiving a grant of $750,000 that we believe, through Ty &amp; Bond's work, along with a 20% contingency factor within that number, that will be sufficient to do the necessary cleanup of this property. In order to receive that money, we would need to purchase the property, which is why we've been working with our experts, as well as our community, to bring you up to speed as to what is on this land. And the question for the purchase will be next Wednesday, as I mentioned earlier. At the interview for the grant back in 2016, we were very successful. We were ranked number one in terms of the competitiveness within the Round 9, from which we received the money. These grants, as I mentioned, are very competitive, and many towns receive them. Shelton is one town that I've done a little bit of research on, and the website for DEC D gives a great synopsis of the work that they've been doing and are still doing to bring back many environmentally challenged industrial sites and bring them back to be on their grant list and produce jobs and be of value to that community. Some of you may have visited other towns, such as Glastonbury, where there is a boathouse, as well as a community center, and other improvements, such as some fields that have been improved for play and other activities on that site. In East Hartford, there is a brownfield site that's been renewed, and that is also along the Connecticut River, and it's where Goodwin College is located. We believe that this is a vital economic development area, and the State Department also agree with us. Benu Chandri, who is our consultant that works with us at Economic and Community Development, visited the site with some selectmen. It was back around Thanksgiving time of 2018, and she was reiterating the department's commitment to this project, commitment to the fact that this is a very viable economic development site, believes that commercial activity, such as restaurants and other types of activities, can occur here. And we are very much partners with the State Department of Economic and Community Development, as well as the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We are -- and I stress that because when towns apply for grants, they have to be able to manage them, and they have to be able to implement them, and make sure that they deliver on what they say they're going to do. Portland fortunately has done a very good job in acquiring grants and administering them and achieving the results that we say we will when we apply for them. So the state has assured the town of Portland through its state senator, Norm Needleman, as well as our state representative, Kristy Carpinho, that the $750,000 are intact. Those dollars are available and earmarked for the town of Portland for this project. It's something that we demanded to know before we brought this to you at public hearing, and I'm pleased to say that the money is available. We also know that within the laws of environmental cleanup, the state also allows up to 50%, provided the money is available, additional dollars for cleanup if that were to become necessary. We believe, based on the studies that have been done and based on past experiences of our Licensed Environmental Professional and others, that there are sufficient dollars for the cleanup, particularly since there is that 20% contingency that's built in. I wanted to give a little synopsis of some of the dollars that have been expended in this project since 2013. This is a project that was in the 2006 Plan of Conservation and Development, and again in 2016, the Plan of Conservation and Development also reiterated the importance of riverfront development to be in concert with the Main Street redevelopment, as well as the Brainerd Place. So synopsis of some of the monies that have been spent for the Phase 1. The town incurred the expense of $3,000 that's been paid for. In terms of investigation grant, I mentioned earlier, we received and have expended $200,000 in extensive study, extensive investigation, borings, and soil samples of this property. We have pending state funding of $750,000 that would provide the cleanup. So that's a total of $950,000 that the state of Connecticut is interested, willing, and anxious to invest in the town of Portland for economic development. I want to also, as a little sidebar, point out that the development of our quarries and the development of our riverfront property was also underwritten by the state in terms of small-town economic assistance grants, for a total of nearly $800,000 to $900,000. And that provided the extension of Brownstone Avenue from where it was a dirt road up to Middlesex Avenue Extension. It also provided new sidewalks from Main Street down to Middlesex Avenue along the football field. We also built, with state funding, the parking lot at the top of the hill that you see from the riverfront park. And the parking there is associated with the fields, the football fields, as well as the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. They also paid for, and we installed water, and there's already sewer, as well as electricity. In fact, the town crew assisted with that project, bringing it into the riverfront park. And we have a stage and a pavilion and flush toilets and storage space in the bathrooms that are located there. So within this area, it's clearly recognized that this is a vital area for us to increase our grant list. It's a vital area for us to get jobs, a vital area for us to invest and get return on our grant list. And I mention the state's involvement because the people in this town pay a lot of money in state taxes. And we, as a small community, don't always get a lot of the dollars that are associated with some of our bigger cities and towns. And this is an example of how we can get back to our community dollars that have been invested in our state, and the dividends, we believe, will be great. They'll be great not just for Portland, but also for the general community in terms of Cromwell, Middletown, and just the regional aspects that the Connecticut River brings all these towns together on. Getting back to some of the other expenditures associated with this project, we spent $9,700 on a property survey that Andy Ives is going to talk about in a few minutes. We asked for additional nitrogen when we did the pipeline testing. That was $2,000, which will be paid at the closing. We felt it was important to have the proper pressure on the test, and so we paid extra to have that. We also have ground-penetrating radar that identifies exactly where that pipe is, so that we are comfortable in knowing its location, since it is underground for most of it. It does come up out of the ground at the manifold and also at the Blue Tanks. It is capped, and very little residual is in that pipe. We also gave to the seller a $19,000 deposit, and there's also legal costs that have been incurred, some of which can be enumerated, some of which is part of general government legal work that has been accomplished over the course of this project since 2013. The purchase price is $385,000. We spent months working with the seller to get to that price. They had wanted over $800,000 for this property, and they had it on the market for that price. And we were able to work with them, and I think once they saw the Phase 1, 2, and 3, and recognized the environmental needs, that the $385,000 was accepted. All of this was done under the auspices of the former Board of Selectmen, as well as the current Board of Selectmen. So all of these things have been accomplished by your elected representatives. We anticipate closing costs would be approximately $15,500. If you deduct the deposit that's already been paid, the net amount that would be necessary to close the purchase would be $381,500. And that amount is available in our revenue sources in the Land Acquisition Number 75, the Land Preservation, which is Number 58, and Contingencies, which is Account Number Provided the community agrees that the purchase will proceed, one of the things that I will recommend immediately to the Board of Selectmen is that a Brownfields Redevelopment Committee be established. We need to know what the community wants in terms of specificity for this property. We will present some ideas that some of our community members. Sue Fiedler, who is a landscape architect and has worked with the town on a voluntary basis, has come up with a schematic for what can be there. But ultimately, this will be a project that needs to be determined by our community. It could be, as I mentioned earlier, a restaurant, a dock, a boat launch, a place for fishing, a plan for the community to gather, and a plan for the community to realize some additional revenue. I think it's very important that the community be involved in this process, and it's something that we are committed to doing. It will also dictate how the remediation occurs, and we'll -- again, I think Amy will go into a little bit of that as we proceed. The last thing I wanted to point out is the investment that this town has made on its own. And the investment was $1,050,000 that you paid for the quarries and the riverfront land, the 2,000 feet of the quarries riverfront land, which is north of this property. At the time, we didn't know exactly how that was going to proceed. We just felt as a community that was something very important to preserve. We felt that it was very important that the community be cognizant of the National Historic Landmark, which is the quarries, and also the importance of our riverfront. For many generations, our riverfront has provided revenue, jobs, and opportunity, as well as recreational enjoyment, and enjoyment, I would add, for nature, for animals, and for special plants and other species that thrive in the river area. Cleaning up of this property will enhance not only the nature, not only the ability to make money, but I think also bring a great deal of pride to our town and bring others to recognize the importance of Portland. I just want to point out some of the revenue that has been accomplished through a lease arrangement, an agreement that we've had with Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. For fiscal year 2018, the total amount of revenue just from the gate was $396,421 that came into the general fund. The general fund utilizes those dollars to help pay for road improvements, to pay for our schools, to pay for this library, and many other things. It's not legal for us to earmark money that's part of the general fund. There was some information that had been shared about earmarking that revenue. That's not something that is allowed. It's something that the selectmen sit every year at budget workshops to determine how monies that come into the general fund will be expended. For fiscal year 2017, we realized $388,341.78 from the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park, and that's only the gate fee. And then in 2016, which was the best year, in that it was extremely hot, extremely dry that season, and the total amount of revenue that was realized was $480,000 and change. I'm not adding all of the other revenue that comes in. They give us a -- which is very important. They are a sewer and water user, and every year, they bring in approximately $4,413 in water and sewer usage fees, as well as annual personal property tax of $45,645. Add to that the fact that I believe there's over 200 people that are employed, and Ed Hayes is here. He'll probably be able to provide us with some more details on that later in the public hearing. But it's very important that jobs, revenue, and, as I said, the improvement in the environment occur. So we hope that you'll learn quite a bit from this presentation tonight, and that you'll have some good comments and questions for us as we proceed. The next part of the presentation will be the drone video that Jim Tripp is going to present to us. Jim?
Thank you. All right. All right. We good now? All right. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Nice to see, again, another full room, which means there's a lot of interest, and that's something that is always -- makes us happy to see people engaged in the process. One of the reasons we start with this slide is because the whole goal of this is to give a different perspective of the properties, make it easy to visualize, but also to really kind of help set the stage for what we're looking at. And what you're going to hear is a common theme is, when you look at this strip, which is 5.28 acres of land, we have a successful and ongoing enterprise in the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park that brings in a lot of revenue to the town, provides a lot of jobs. And we have another tremendous asset to the town, which is the Connecticut River. And one of the sort of the true value in this property is allowing some development to occur that's going to be able to leverage both of those in this area. This property here, this is the southernmost piece of property. This is the 222. This is the closest to the asphalt plant that is sitting here, just to its south. And of course, you see the wooded border. Right now, this is just a flat parking area with no buildings on it. This is 230. Again, it's the next lot that's up, again, right across from the Exploration and Discovery Park. And again, just a flat lot, wooded, not a lot there that's available for development. When you look here, we wanted to show, this is the proximity with the river and this wooded bank that you see here. This actually was not initially wooded when the property was originally in place. This is a bank that is actually graded down to the river. It's not a vertical wall, and you've seen the foliage that has taken place over the -- well, really, over the last few decades. This is a view that we took, and when you see in this property, this is 248. This is basically on what would be the southern border of 248, looking to the northwest. And you'll see here, this is the office building that's on site. This is the fuel terminal where they would distribute for the trucks. And obviously, you see the tanks over here. But what's important to me, looking at this, is that it gives you an idea, when you look at just sort of how beautiful the rest of this area is around here, what can be done with these properties and where the value lay. You'll also see here, by the way, this is a wall that is in place. It basically becomes the barrier between what would be the working area of the property and basically some land that is not really used for, you know, basically, it's -- right now, of a sudden, I'm not going to say vacant because of the trees, but it was the unused portion of the property that abuts the riverfront. You'll see that there's actually quite a bit more land there than you would expect to see from looking at it through the fence. Again, one of the reasons we're doing this is to get that different perspective. This is back a little bit further to the south, and looking back at the whole property to put it all together, you can see the five tanks that are in place. The pipeline actually was above ground. It would come out underneath the road, and the property dips in this portion over here, and the pipeline would become exposed, and then it would run over to the tanks. That has been disconnected, and that is capped now, as First Selectwoman Bransfield had explained. That was drained. It was a significant recovery of all the product that was put in place as preservative back when it was decommissioned, and that was recovered. And obviously, a successful pressure test, which gives us a lot of -- it was very heartening to see that. On the northern end of the property, in this corner, this is basically the garage building that's in place. It's surprisingly in pretty good shape for a building. You can see some busted-out windows, but we were there, as we often have been in the last year, with a lot of rain, and there was nothing coming through the ceiling, et cetera. So there's definitely some potential with that building. Just a little bit closer view of the tanks and give people an idea of what you're looking at. We can zoom in a little bit, give you an idea. A tall staircase that comes up, and again, these are currently decommissioned. And one of the things we look at of the things we look at, we go through the potential remediation of this property, is the fact that there's still value in those tanks, either to be a scrap or to be used elsewhere. So these are part of the projects that we hope will help with the overall remediation. This is a straight-down aerial view, just to really get an idea of how the property lays out. Again, this is the garage building, the office, the distribution terminal. You see the tanks here to the south, and you get a little bit better view. I have one more slide that'll show this even better, just how much property between this, what would be the sort of this retaining wall area and the actual riverfront. When you look at this property over here, this is the old Coast Guard facility that is now under private lease, as I understand it. This road in here is public space. This is a public road, not a private right-of-way. It's still town property, and this, in this area over here, is the riverfront park, the parking area that is currently being used as the five-acre parcel for parking for Brownstone Exploration and Discovery. This is, again, another view to show you. Again, you get a much better view of just how much land is actually sitting to the west of that wall. This is an area, when you look at it, that this could be, and would hopefully be, still remain some sort of public access space. So you have the potential with all this property here to have that mix of, where you're going to have some public space to have access to the river, which is something we sorely need to maintain in Portland, but also, you have plenty of room and capacity for economic development. Again, you can see a little bit better here. This is some of the cars and where that parking area is located. And again, one more gives you a little bit more of a view, heading a little bit further to the south. This, in this area here, is where the deep-water dock was located, where they would actually come up, and the tankers would tie off. You'll see that there's the remnants of the dock that has collapsed. You'll still see the piling in place. We have some additional slides as we go forward. You'll see that in more detail. But the reason I wanted to show this is there was a question about what this was. We took a ride out, and actually, it was a tree. So it's, this is not actually part of the dock. What you see there was the tree and the turbulence in the water as the river flowed by it. And again, now you get to see in a little bit more detail, as you can see, the dock is in a little bit of disrepair. The piling is still in place, but this is where the deep-water access would be. I ran my boat through here, taking soundings, and, for example, I was in that 20-foot, 20, actually, where I took one where I was 22 feet. So this is, you know, we're lucky in Portland, this side of the river, in this section of the river here, which is the north-south section of our border, the channel actually is on the east side of the river. So that bodes well in terms of marine traffic getting up to any development docks, et cetera, that we put in this area. It's not as deep as it was because it doesn't, now, without all the traffic, it doesn't get dredged as often as it used to, or really, I don't think it gets dredged anymore at all, but we still have, fortunately, a good channel to work with. And this is just a little bit high-level view, where you can see a little bit more, again, the whole surrounding. Again, 248, this is the Coast Guard area. You see, actually, the entire parking lot up to the river, and then, of course, the access road into the riverfront park, and this is the 230 property. And just one more. Okay, basically, I want to talk a little bit about the neighbor directly to our east, because one of the, again, the value of this property is that this entire area, we've had some successful redevelopment that has been very valuable to the town. This will, the acquisition of these properties and their economic development, you know, the cleanup and then the development will definitely enhance that. This here is a look at the quarries originally, basically exactly to the east of this parcel. The strip of land that we're talking about with these three parcels, that 5.2 acres, goes about halfway down the quarries. We still have an abutting neighbor, which is the asphalt plant that is still in place that would run further down, but it gets us quite a ways towards being able to clean up along this border. In here, this area is actually under, basically, being going to be redeveloped by, you know, private development now, which is Quarry View, which is another nice addition that's come to light in the last few weeks, or last couple of months, I guess. And again, just a little bit, another view that shows a little bit more of the area, just for context, again, this is a little bit more of the quarries. This here, you can see the south quarry. That's why I leave this one in, because it gives you a little bit better idea, and this is, you know, Silver Street running up, running here between Main Street and Brownstone Avenue. And one more, because I always like, you know, you look at the work that we're looking to do, I just thought it was pretty nice that, in terms of, to get a view, you actually got evidence of a lot of activity going on, based on the splashes, the people walking, et cetera. It's, this is, you know, what we're looking at, and I like to talk with this slide a little bit about, is the fact that you've got this development by itself. This enterprise brings 80,000 to 100,000 people to our town every year. And when we start talking about redeveloping these properties and the potential for the different activities that could take place there, I think that's an important, it's important for us to realize that that development itself, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's other shops that go in place, you know, different ideas that folks have had, there's, there are going to be people that are going to be down in that area already. They're currently coming down and visiting that area, and what they see right now is these properties that are in disrepair and that are not being put to what I would consider their best and highest use, but we have the opportunity to do that, if we're able to purchase that and clean them up. This slide is put in place because I just wanted, again, in context, this is the asphalt plant. This was active for many years. It was actually when we were cleaning the quarries up, you know, 20 years ago, it was active, and you used to get that smell from it when it would operate, especially with the right wind. It is now still in place, and it's not, it's not being closed down officially, but it is not currently operating, which I think has been, it definitely has alleviated some of the odors and things that come to the area, but that, this right now would be, would remain. This is not one of the parcels that's in play. It really starts at this 222 and works north. From the river, at the very first, when we questioned, the very first presentation that we did at the riverfront park, one of the questions was, what does it look like from the river? So we took some additional pictures, and these are the result of that. But you can see from the water, you can see the tanks currently today, you've got the foliage. But again, if you look at the bank, it's, right now, it's a grated bank that comes down to the water. It's not a vertical wall, so that would, that would help promote some access going forward. And again, when you take a look, there's your piling, and of course, the dock that is in disrepair. There's a lot of stone, which, my understanding, has been moved around. I'm sure it was ice, et cetera. So this is an area that could be cleaned up, and again, in terms of providing access to the river. And this would be the northernmost border of the parcels. This vertical wall is actually associated with the, what was the old Coast Guard facility that's in, currently, that's been in private hands. And of course, the property that we're looking to purchase from the border would start at this location and then go south. All right, that's, let's see. Putting it all together, this is just a video showing it and just sliding to give you an idea of what it all looks in one shot. Basically, that's 248 here, we're sliding to the south, direct overhead view of the tanks, the river, and of course, gets a little jumpy, it's an older computer, and then it runs through, again, 230, and then to 222. So there's quite a lot of room to work with and quite a lot of potential for redevelopment. And one more, there's just a little bit of a lower view. This was basically parked over 248. That's the garage at a little bit lower level, and just spinning, there's the fuel depot, the office building. You can see, obviously, right, you got all the foliage that's come up through. It all tries to reclaim the area. There are the tanks that would need to be removed. There's the pipeline, and it doesn't go any further than there. And of course, heading south across 230, and then according to 222, and again, keeping an idea of just, again, the proximity to the river. And I think that concludes that portion of it.
Yeah. Andy Ives has been to talk a bit about the survey that was done. Andy?
Do you want to do the survey? Did you want me to put the plan up first?
Do you want him to, do you want Jim to put the survey map up?
Survey, you want to do the survey? Okay, we'll do this afterwards, or? Okay, this was, just, I guess, real quick, was just a concept plan, and the idea being, looking at, you know, you've got private industry buildings where you could, whether it's a restaurant, et cetera, potential for pads for, you know, food vendors, for example, looking for a reuse for that existing building that's on site, potentially, you know, deep water, you know, well, I shouldn't say deep water, but a dock area to promote not only, you know, river access as well in this area. This is one of those cases where we're truly going to have to see, you know, we have a lot of ideas, but we're really going to see what the developers would come up with, as we've seen with the fact that the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park, the idea that came, you know, the entrepreneur came forward with, right, in Sean Hayes and his brothers, really exceeded, I think, even what we thought was good potential for the area, and has been a fantastic addition to the town. So I know that we would look forward to seeing what the developers come up with in the future. And if you want to come up, I'll put up your. Yeah, it's, it should open to it. All right, there you go.
Good evening. I'm Andy Ives from Langen Engineering. I am the survey manager at Langen. I'm also a Portland resident, so I was very excited to be able to, given the opportunity to complete this Alta land title survey. So the purpose of a land title survey is every commercial land transaction will have a title insurance policy, which requires a land title survey, which basically has, it's Connecticut A2 boundary survey, so it establishes the property lines for the parcels, which is depicted on this map. We also did a topographic survey. It's a lot easier to do that at the same time as when we're doing the boundary survey, save the town a little bit of money, and now this can be used for future development. So if a developer did want to come in, if the town purchases the property, they have this as a base map to start to work with and come up with ideas, which is very important. As you can see there, it is three parcels, as Jim spoke about. We, the property line runs along the river and along Brownstone Ave. There's two encumbrances on the property. One is a sewer easement, which is in favor of the town of Portland, and the other is a drainage easement, which is also in favor of the town of Portland, for infrastructure that is currently on the property. There is an easement for the pipeline, which actually benefits the property. It doesn't necessarily burden it. The base flood elevation across the site is approximately 23 and 1/2 feet. So as you can see, this line up here is called the floodway line. That is, FEMA establishes that line, so you cannot build inside the floodway, so if the river does flood, it can flow unimpeded. Outside of the floodway, in a flood zone with a base flood elevation, you can still develop, you just have to have the proper flood insurance. Again, this is a pretty, it's a pretty good-sized bank. I don't think this property has flooded in many, many years, but you still would have, you do have some minor elevation challenges that you'd have to do. You just basically have to put a pad or something up a little bit higher, maybe a few feet higher than what you have currently. It's nothing outrageous by any means. But the key with this is just so that way the town and the legal team involved with this transaction, should it move forward, has the proper mapping and knows what's out there, and knows what the encumbrances are on the property and where they are on the property. And then again, so that way it can be used for future planning if needed. So, thank you. And there's copies of the survey up front, both on a 24-by-36 and 11-by-17. You're more than welcome to grab them, and I'll be available after for questions as well.
We're going to have a presentation now from our licensed environmental professional, Amy Valencourt, and Amy works at Ty &amp; Bond in Middletown. Amy?
So my name is Amy Valencourt. I am a licensed environmental professional with Ty &amp; Bond. We're downtown Middletown located. I get to look at the blue tanks every day from my office. My wonderful reports are up here for anyone who would like to look at them. We also have them electronically for anyone who would like them sent to them. As Susan indicated, this project's been going on for about five or six years. I came into the town to help them with this project. As Susan indicated, the property was abandoned, you know, getting blighted. It was in an estate. It is perfect for what the state has set up the brownfields program for. In my career, I was lucky enough to work on the first-ever EPA pilot brownfields grant that came out in 1995, and since that time, 95% of my work has been brownfields. So I work with the state, Mark Lewis, and DECD, and a lot of times, I help with the grant applications and the negotiations. So seeing the potential in this project, knowing that it's in an estate, the town is really, you know, looking to use this, bring it back to productive reuse, promote jobs, economic development, improve the grant list. So we came out and we started with a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, and what that is, is documenting the history of the property from before it was ever developed. So I got to see a lot of history of this property with the brownstone quarrying, and these three properties were part of that operation. This side of the quarry was actually used for the stone cutting, and so there were a lot of operations that took place way back when on this portion of the property. They used a lot of coal burning to fuel their engines to cut the stone. They also later on had storage of petroleum products. And so that was really the origins of the industrial history on this property, and it went on from there. So it had become a tar and asphalt plant. It was bulk storage petroleum. So a lot of the issues on this property are all petroleum-related. A lot of the issues on this property are surface releases. I have, in addition to the reports, I have a map here, which, when you get closer and when you come up and see, we've marked all the areas that have to be remediated, and they look like little hatched red blobs on there. And how we came up with that is through years of investigation, going out there, doing multiple rounds of testing, and to give you an idea, we did over 100 test holes on this property. I sent to the laboratory over 130 samples to have analyzed. We have 19 groundwater wells that we have been sampling periodically over the years for the last four years. So we have a good handle on what is there. On top of that, when we make these areas of red on the map, I am going to where the soil is clean, so I'm overcompensating. I'm, of course, you know, it's me, my license, my reputation, I'm going to be conservative. So when I draw those red lines on there, I'm making them a little bigger than they have to be. That's my cushion. And then on top of that, when we do our cost estimate, we're adding in a contingency. I always go with 20% on top. And as Susan indicated, when we're going in and we're doing a cost estimate and we're giving a contingency, and we go to the state and they give you a grant, there's also the option to have what they call a topper, where if things are unforeseen or you come across something, you have the ability to go back and request more funds if they're available. And so with this property and what we found, again, a lot of the releases were surface releases, and with petroleum, especially storage of petroleum, nobody likes to lose their money when they're operating a petroleum facility. So if they lose oil in the ground, that's their money that they lose. So these operators are pretty careful when they're doing, handling their petroleum. A lot of the releases that we have are from the trucks, you know, filling up, and some spills on the surface. The asphalt plant, some coal pockets. Again, a lot of surface releases, zero to two feet, some go to four feet. The most significant, the deepest that we had was in the area of the blue tanks. In that area, they have an underground storage tank that collects all the overflow from where they fill up the trucks, and we had a release there, and we know we have to go to And we had a release there, and we know we have to go to 10 feet. But other than that, the majority of it is shallow. Now, being a licensed environmental professional, I have to follow the DEP regulations, but they give me a lot of options on a property like this. So right off the bat, if you're developing commercial industrial and you're not doing residential, I only have to clean up to a commercial industrial standard. That's less stringent. Also, they allow me to do things like two feet of clean fill and three inches of asphalt to cap, to be protective of human health, no one's going to come in contact. And there are a lot of variables that come into play there, but this type of site is manageable. It's very easy to excavate. There's no surprises out here. For me, it's kind of cookie cutter. And so that's our remedial plan, and that's how we came up. We're going to go in and dig out hotspots. We're planning on capping, and as Susan said, whatever you guys decide to do with this property, even if you're flipping it to a developer, I can work with that. Let's say, one property you want to clean, totally clean, to flip it to a developer, we can consolidate contamination onto one parcel and cap it with a building, a parking lot. So we have a lot of options to use in our toolkit under the remediation standard regulations to remediate this. So with the budget that we have, we can get the remediation done to a commercial standard on these properties that you can either develop yourself, if you decide to keep them and keep control, lease them out for development, or outright sell them. So really, that's, you know, we're, we want you to get along with your, your planning stages. Our remediation is going to be remediating to your development.
Thank you. You're welcome. Our economic development planner, Mary Dickerson, is going to give us some information as well. Mary?
So I'm Mary Dickerson. I'm the economic development coordinator. I just want to give you some background information on how we got to this parcel, because the question I get the most is why would the town ever choose to buy a contaminated parcel? The answer goes back to the acquisition of the quarries. At the time the town acquired the quarries, they started doing some overall planning for the, for the entire downtown area, so from Main Street to the riverfront. And Carol R. Johnson &amp; Associates was hired, and in 2001, they produced the Portland Downtown and Quarries Master Plan. Included in that master plan was the redevelopment of the riverfront. And it included these parcels with the eventual idea that instead of there being what we knew 25 years ago with the riverfront, that we would have a riverfront that was accessible and that there'd be a connectivity between the businesses and the restaurants that are on Main Street, and our schools, and our public buildings with access to the Connecticut River. And in their forethought, they went ahead, and in 2004, they hired the Williams Group, who are real estate advisors, who came in and did another study. And what their study was, was a blueprint and a development plan for the downtown and the riverfront. And they actually looked at potential uses, they looked at businesses, they looked at the type of things that would thrive, being in a small locality like we are with the access we have to Route 9 into 91. And they came up with this plan. After that, the town and the plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission went ahead and changed the zoning by putting in a riverfront overlay zone. So that riverfront overlay zone encompasses the area of the quarries to Middle 6th Avenue, down to the riverfront, and down past a little bit where Silver Street is. And they added some uses to that. So specifically, it's an industrial zone. Normally, restaurants wouldn't be allowed. They allowed for restaurant uses. They allowed for recreational uses. Specifically, they talked about things like miniature golf, activities that relate to the water, so boating, marinas, anything like that would be something that would be allowed in this overlay zone. So that was done about 15 years ago. In our 2006 Plan of Conservation and Development, they included this area as one of their targets for redevelopment, and again in 2016. So when this property became vacant, and then the owner passed away, and then the property transferred to his mother, and then she passed, and the property transferred to another relative, it went on the market with a real estate agent. And the only groups that came forward that were interested wanted to do surface storage of heavy equipment. So if you're familiar with caterpillar-type machinery, what they wanted to do was buy this type of machinery, industrial equipment, and part it out, sell the portions of it that were still good. And it's a viable plan for a business. However, from the town's perspective and tax perspective, those items are inventory, so they're nontaxable. So there really wasn't any benefit to the town, and none of those ideas for surface storage took off. I think a lot of it had to do, when Andy talks about where that flood line is, they would have to be very careful with their site plan to make sure that all of their equipment was outside that area. So it really became a stagnant property, and that was why the town approached the owner, was because it was part of our master plan of development that has been in effect for 18 years. I think most of the other questions have been answered about funding, about what's, how it's going to be capped. One of the questions that came up was, how is the decision going to be made, and how are they going to develop the property? So it's really impossible to say today that in four years, you could put a certain business there. What will happen is, working with a licensed environmental professional, the engineering firm that will do the remediation, they will look at the floodplain area, they will look at the hotspots, they will look at distances from the street, and come up with the areas that are going to be capped. That's where buildings can go, that's where parking areas can go. So this plan was designed just with, we have a very generous landscape architect and designer that came up with looking at the hotspots. So when you look at Amy's plan here, you can look there, and you can see that she kind of took those and said, where can we best fit buildings? The building down on the right, the public dock, is not really a building as much as I think that was meant to be, like a pavilion. The building up in the upper-left corner is the existing garage that you see. The idea for that was something like a brewery, which is why they put the food court next to that. You'll see the parking area around there for the food truck court. Restaurants, retail shops, and then access for the marina, boating to come in, and parking. So this was just taking what we know as being the contaminated areas and working around those to say where buildings could be placed, where parking could be placed, where green space would go. That process would become, I would say, more elaborate once we own the property. To spend resources hiring designers to come in and do that is not something you do to a property you don't own, because you're giving that investment away to whoever does choose to buy that property. We have talked about putting together, the intent is to put together a brownfield remediation committee that will kind of be the oversight for the process. They will also be the oversight for coming up with a preliminary plan, something similar to this but with much more detail. The types of buildings, where they're going to go, how many square feet we can fit, how many parking spaces we can fit. And then that preliminary plan will come to public meetings just like this, and people's input will come in. What would you like to see there? What kind of businesses would you frequent? What are we missing? The big question is, what do you do when you go to other towns? What do you leave Portland for? And is that something that's viable that we could bring here? From all of that information, will come a preliminary, sort of a master plan for the site, and this committee will put out a request for proposals, so an RFP. And just as the Hayes Brothers came to the town and said, we would like to put this business here, those proposals will come in, this committee will evaluate it, and they will make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen based on those proposals. And that recommendation will be, does the town maintain ownership of the property and lease parcels out to specific businesses and developers? Or does the town sell the property and take that money and put it back into town coffers? So that's really a process, and it's not something that we could say today, we're going to put a 10,000-square-foot building here and a 30,000-square-foot building there. We work with the developers once we own the property and get their ideas, and take those ideas, and then negotiate either leases or a purchase and sale agreement. So that's the basic information that I have to give you. Know that this was a very long process. There have been three different people in the planning position since this started. It started with Susan DeSina, who now works for Department of Economic and Community Development, and then to Deanna Rhodes and to myself. As Susan had mentioned, there's been a number of steep grants. We've redeveloped this area. If any of you have gone to the Summer Concert Series, 20 years ago, that was not possible. If any of you, I remember growing up, walking that property. It was not a place where I could have ever imagined that we could have sat on the riverfront and listened to music and had food and visited with neighbors. That's the result of a lot of work, and it was long-range planning. There was grants for each stage of that, expanding the roadway, bringing Brownstone Avenue to meet Middle 6th Avenue, putting in water and sewer and bathrooms, building the pavilion, building the band shell, clearing that property, and then the contract with the Hayes Brothers for Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. And let's not forget that the quarries are a national landmark. So all of these events have happened over the last 18, 19 years to bring us to this point where we are now. So it wasn't the idea that let's buy a contaminated parcel. It really is the next step in what has been a long-term plan.
The last presenter tonight's Mark Lewis, from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, to talk about liability protection for us. So, Mark?
Thanks, Susan. And again, I'm Mark Lewis. I'm the brownfields coordinator for the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And a big part of my job as the brownfield coordinator is to work with cities and towns like Portland to help them through the process of redeveloping brownfields. And I've worked on a lot of projects over the years, and I have to say that this project seems like it checks off all the boxes, and the town checks off all the boxes of what could be a potentially really successful project. In my experience, the things that make brownfields work are the town has to have good leadership, you have to have vision of where you want to go, you have to have buy-in from the community, and you have to have some, just some optimism. You have to be a glasses-half-full kind of person rather than glasses-half-empty kind of person. The state has three different liability relief programs that could help the town manage some of the environmental liability that goes with owning a brownfield property. And basically, the idea is that in return for the town's commitment to acquire the site, clean it up, and redevelop it, we offer some relief, again, from the liability that goes with this. And I'll explain what all three are, and I'll explain why I think one particular program is a particularly good fit. The first is the municipal liability relief program, and that is administered by us directly at the Department of Econo, I'm sorry, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And that allows the town to acquire the site, and it does not require the town to clean the site up. This is meant for sites that a town will hold on to for a period of time and eventually flip to a developer. It exempts the site from the property transfer program, which, Amy, I don't believe that this site is an establishment under the property transfer program. But if the site were subject to the property transfer program, it would be exempt from that requirement. Basically, the town just has to be a good steward of the property. If there are piles of contaminated soil, for example, that kids could be exposed to or people could be exposed to, those have to be kept covered up, and people have to be prevented from being exposed. If there's pits or holes that somebody could fall into, that has to be prevented. So it's a lot of just common sense-type stuff, keeping fencing around hazards, that sort of thing. But it doesn't require that the site be cleaned up in accordance with our remediation standard regulations. And the remediation standard regulations, which Amy talked about, she has to clean the site up to, are 60- to 70-page-long, very technical regulations with numerical standards for soil and groundwater of how clean is clean. But again, this particular program is meant to be a holding pattern. There are two other liability relief programs that are administered by the Department of Economic and Community Development. But both of those, DECD, works very closely with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection where I work. And the first of those programs is the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program. And that, that program requires the town to assess the site and then clean it up in accordance with the remediation standard regulations. And it also exempts the town from the property transfer program. And the most important thing probably for this site is that it also would exempt the town from the requirement to assess or clean up any contamination that might be going outside the borders of the property. That might be stuff that's flowing off as far as contaminated groundwater, it could be contaminated sediment, or whatever. And, and the town does have to stop stuff from flowing off the site, but again, it doesn't have to clean up anything outside the boundaries of the property. It also exempts the town from liability to third parties. A third party could be a neighbor that says the contamination on this site has injured me in some way. That could be an injury to their health, or it could be financial injury. And it also exempts the town from liability to the state, as long as the town does, in fact, clean the site up in accordance with the regulations and redevelops it as it says it's going to. Now, the other liability relief program is the Brownfield Remediation and Revitalization Program. That also exempts the site from the property transfer program. It provides that relief from the responsibility to assess or clean up off-site contamination, as long as the site, as the town does stop anything that's leaking off of the site, from leaking off the site. It also provides that defense from third-party liability and liability to the state. But the, the thing that's different about this program is it also provides a clear path, should the town want to transfer one or more of these parcels to a private developer, provides a clear path for that developer to apply to the Brownfield Remediation and Revitalization Program and get those same protections. As long as the developer that comes along can show that they didn't cause the contamination, which I'm sure they can, and can show that they don't have any kind of a relationship with whoever is responsible for cleaning up the contamination, then there's, then there's a really clear path. Now, the Brownfield Remediation and Revitalization Program has a fee of 5% of the value of just the land, based on the most recent grant list. It doesn't include any buildings or any tanks. The town will never have to pay that fee, but if any of the properties are flipped to a private developer, that private developer will pay the fee. And basically, what that fee is, you can think of it as an insurance policy, because the state is taking some risk in letting the town off the hook, as it were, for the contamination and for cleaning up off-site contamination. That money gets deposited into a special fund that the state can draw on if we ever have to clean up off-site contamination. Right now, there's probably about 60 or so properties between the abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program and the Brownfield Remediation and Revitalization Program. Knock on wood, we haven't had to draw into that fund so far, but the money is there, and it's really to compensate the taxpayers for the risk that the taxpayers are undertaking. My opinion is that that Brownfield Remediation and Revitalization Program, the last of the three programs that I talked about, is the best fit for this property. And that is largely because of that provision that says that you can transfer the benefits to a developer. One thing I would suggest is that the town can either make one application for all three properties, or the town can make three separate applications, one for each property. It really doesn't make a difference to us. It's not going to be very much more paperwork, one for one or all three. I recommend that the town put in a separate application for each of the properties, because it'll give the town a little bit more flexibility if they want, let's say, keep one property and flip the other two, or whatever, whatever the town decides to do. And I also have to get back on my soapbox a little bit. I think one of the things that I'm hearing that I think is a really good thing is the town wants to put together a brownfield redevelopment committee so that the public can really decide what they want to do with this property. I've seen that process work really well in other towns, and I think it's great that you're thinking about it. That's really all I have.
The first person, Elwyn Guild, Chairman of Economic Development Commission. Elwyn?
And I will be briefed. I consider myself to be the cheerleader for Portland's government. What you have witnessed tonight, just in the explanations of this opportunity, couldn't be more comprehensive, couldn't be more transparent, and couldn't be more inviting to you as citizens to engage. Over and over again, the town's citizens have been invited to add value to the decision-making, and this is just one more of those occasions. The next one was what was just spoken to, and that is, because I am anticipating that every one of you will appear one week from tomorrow and vote yes on this purchase. every one of you will appear one week from tomorrow and vote yes on this purchase. That's what, that's my expectation. And with that, once again, you will have an opportunity to engage the future of, of that decision and what ultimately this development will look like and, and how it will meet your needs and the needs of citizens of this town in the future. The plan of conservation and development has always been the guide. You've heard that mentioned several times. I'll say only this much more about it. It has three keystones, and those keystones were established, again, by the townspeople in a long series of meetings that created this plan of conservation and development. Here they are. Number one, create a town center. Number two, develop the riverfront to link to that town center. And number three, work to fully develop the potentials for the old Elmcrest Psychiatric Hospital campus. All three of those are doable in, in the, in the span of that plan and are already engaged and underway in many, many meaningful ways. So I'm going to stand up here as the cheerleader once more and say, please join me in voting yes a week from tomorrow. Thank you.
The next speaker, Carrie Click, Cox Road. Do you want to speak? Okay, thanks, Carrie. Margaret Coe, Redberry Lane. Also, Margaret. David Blaze, Co. Avenue Extension. Dave? Thanks, Dave. Jeff Murray, Ridgeview Road. Thank you. Caroline Murray? If you would come to the podium, that'd be great.
Actually, last week's presentation was on YouTube, and I looked, there were a hundred and forty-seven views. So the, the YouTube works very well to get information out, so I was happy to see that.
I'm the other half of Jeff and Caroline Murray. So I'm a relative newcomer also. We've been taxpayers here in town for sixteen years, and we love Portland. We love the way that everybody helps everybody else out. We love the family values, the work ethic, and the joy and the fun and all of the opportunities that are in town. The senior center, the library down at the park. Thank you. And so I think this will just expand our opportunities. It will expand our revenue, and it will give us riverfront access. We have the most riverfront of any town on the Connecticut River, and oh my gosh, let's grab a chance to be able to use more in a multiple ways. Thank you.
Watch your step on the cords when you walk across, please. Darlene Rice, Russell Avenue?
Good evening. I am a sixty-three-year resident of this town. Some of you may remember my mother, Mary Louise Rice Wheezy, who also was born and raised here. I'm also a very proud townie. Nine-plus weeks ago, I became the co-owner of what my husband Dean Sucey and I are calling Quarry View. It's a historic 6.3 parcel of the Brownstone Quarry located at 311 Brownstone Avenue. We have over three hundred Facebook followers anxiously watching and waiting as we change this Jurassic Park that was filled with pickers and poison ivy back to its natural state of exposed brownstone ledges, rocks, and what we just discovered this week, dinosaur footprints. Dean and I, with no defined vision, knew what we wanted, and we wanted to own a piece of this town three hundred, three hundred-year-old history. We are restoring this and the view to bring this area back to life for others to enjoy. The area along Brownstone Avenue has a magnificent brownstone park that is enjoyed by scores of people local and out of town yearly, with weddings, music, natural sights, sounds, and walkways. We have an adventure and discovery water park that thousands of people from Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania, Maryland, along with state residents come to by car, school bus, and tour buses. There was a vision in that overgrown water area that was littered with discarded cars and many other things that many could not see its potential at the time. Many voiced their opinion as to not doing, not changing, not growing, and yet, look at that park today. Growth must happen if we're to move forward in this town and increase our revenue and increase our tax base. The name of this town is Portland. We now have an opportunity to add to the area of Brownstone Avenue with a new waterfront vision, where Portland means land surrounding a harbor. We were part of Chatham until 1841, and our name comes from Portland, England, a place famous for its free stone quarries. The purchase of the waterfront property can only be a plus to this town. The monies for helping to clean up this location, to my knowledge, can only be used by the town to clean it up from the contamination from the previous owners and businesses that were operating out of there. To think that someone else will step in and take this task on leaves the questions. Where are they, and why haven't they? There's profitability in the area that has such high visibility and access to the Connecticut River, and we, as town residents and taxpayers, have an opportunity to purchase this land for revitalization, renovation, ownership, rental, or resale. I'm encouraging the people of Portland to put aside your constant fear of rising taxes and think about the advantage of increased revenue and ownership for one of the largest areas of access and beauty to the Connecticut River. Portland simply cannot grow if we remain status quo. Thank you.
Teri Strabell?
River View, Street Extension.
Hi, Teri.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
And as my street address means, I live on the Connecticut River, and it is stunning. You guys have to go with this. That's all I have to say. Just vote yes. Thank you.
Larry Sirulik, Belcourt?
Yeah. I'm Conservation Chairman of the Matobisak Autobahn. We're a chapter of National Autobahn based in Middletown. I have a little heartburn, not with the project or the methodology, or the principle behind it. I have a heartburn behind the financing of this project using the land acquisition money. I've researched the charter. I've looked through all the plan of conservation and development, and it's nowhere written exactly what that land acquisition money should be used for. But being a conservationist and the plan of conservation and development, what is the first word in that plan? It's conservation. And I feel that this money that is going to be used on this project has better uses than this project. This project is basically an urban project. It could develop a little bit along the waterfront, but basically, this is an urban project, and the money should come from somewhere besides the land acquisition funds. We are very delinquent in this town as far as buying land that needs to be protected. You've got a big spread of agricultural land along Strickland Street that's very vulnerable. Those are the kind of pieces of property that the land acquisition funds should be centered upon. The Wongonk Meadows is another area, a very valuable ecological property that the land acquisition fund should be zeroing in on. Parcels around the Schumacher State Forest are also vulnerable properties that need to be picked up on. This also represents a long-term, maybe not economic value for the town, but a long-term conservation value for the town, which is very valuable. So the only problem I have with this project is how are you going to fund it? And I'm very definitely suggesting that you find some other way to fund this project. Even though, yes, there might be a little strip of land along the river that could be used, the bulk of this property, we don't really know what, what it's going to end up. And I will guarantee you, there's going to be more commercial development here than conservation. Even if you clean up the property and put a few flowers in, that doesn't cut the mustard with land acquisition. You have so much vulnerable property that needs to be protected. And we, we really have a conservation crisis going on, both with pollinators, plants, and animals. You can go on and on and on. You know, you go to the DEP, and you, and your booklet of endangered species is about the size of Manhattan phone book in Connecticut. So all I'm saying is, as a conservationist, look to a different way of funding this.
Next speaker is Cindy Andrews, Stonegate Drive.
That's pretty tough to talk after the last speaker because I agree with a lot of his ideas and with a lot of his concerns. But I also think that this is a chance at the riverfront, and we can't let this go. I'm not a native of Portland. My husband and I came with three little kids fifty years ago, and we love this place, and our kids love this place. I say vote yes for the land acquisition, but Mr. Sirulik, I'm still with you with conservation everywhere else, too, and I would be on board. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Kitch Breen Sernicki from Main Street. Kitch?
Thank you. I, I think that we've had a great presentation this evening, and a lot of speakers who gave us information that would lead us all, hopefully, to vote yes to acquire this land. I, I feel strongly, too, that because we own so much river, we, we border so much riverfront that we should get connected to it, and I think the possibilities economically and workforce and for recreation are, are so important for the town to be able to grow in an outward and to-the-water type movement. So I would recommend that we vote yes. Thank you.
Bobby Hetrick, Clearview Drive?
Most of my questions were answered tonight. I think it was a great presentation. I just have one question I don't know who could answer. What would be the timeframe for the purchase and the cleanup?
I do know in terms of the timeframe for the purchase, Bobby, we need to have the vote on September fourth, obviously. And before we close, should there be a positive vote, we would need to work with DEEP and DECD on that liability protection. I think it's imperative that the town have that in hand before we actually close on the project, and we know that there would be between four to six to eight weeks in terms of working with them in that application. That's something that's been recommended to us for that purpose. So I would anticipate the closing would be after that product has been in the hands of the town. In terms of the cleanup, I think maybe I'll have Amy answer that because she does have a plan for that within the phase, phases that she's put forward. Amy?
Thank you. So yes, we're planning on getting this done between two and three years. And really, you know, that's why we're looking for the brownfields committee to get put together, for the public to have their input. We would like to know which way you're heading for the development.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Melissa Gary Arsataj, Collins Hill Road.
First off, thank you. It was a very good presentation, and I'm a big fan of the drone video, so. So I'm not from Portland. Portland's my twenty-fifth move. And growing up all over the place, we were always lucky. We lived on the water. Lived on an island, and water is just something, I love it. I love the river. I love the ocean. And as a matter of fact, on Thursday, I'm leaving to go spend two days kayaking. This is a huge opportunity. But with that being said, I have a lot of trepidation. I have a lot of concerns because I keep seeing parking lots. I keep seeing a lot of parking spots. And being someone who loves the water, I want to be able to get to the water. I want to be able to go kayaking. I want to be able to be that dummy that flips their kayak and enjoys every moment of it. And if we're going to spend this money, and it's our money that's being spent, it should benefit us, the taxpayers. And the folks that run Brownstone Quarry, they're great partners. But part of being a great partner is understanding that it's got to be a fair and equitable relationship. And that being said, we just can't, and I wish the, the plan, projected plan, I know that it's not in stone. Again, I understand that they want parking. I get it. But we want open space. We want to be able to use that water. We want to be able to have fun on the river. Want to be able to walk down the river on, what do you call it? Like boardwalk, you know, and enjoy that open space. So can I say yes, I'm going to vote? Yes? I don't know. It's a lot for me to take in because I want to make a decision that's best for the community. So, thank you.
Sheila Peterson, Freedom Way? Thank you, Sheila. Colleen Kimball, East Main Street? Thank you. Dean Sucey, Russell Avenue?
Hello, I'm Dean Sucey. I'm the co-owner. I belong to her. I take no credit for the dinosaur tracks that we found this week. Mike Neon actually pointed them out. They were right under my nose the whole time, and I'd been looking the whole time I've been down there digging stones up. I was actually, when he said, "I left it up there by the front," and I, I said, "Oh, boy, I hope I didn't break that rock," and I'm thinking about it. Anyhow, they're there, and it was pretty awesome. Conservation, where the money comes from, I don't care. The, the work has been done to go forward, to make this possible. That's what you're voting on. Access to the river? What was her name again? Melissa. I agree with you, but understand that if we don't do something with this property or we don't own it, somebody else comes in and takes it, and then they develop it, you'll have no access to the river because they could put a business in there, commercial, anything, and then we're done. Even with a parking lot for a brownstone, with that sketch that I saw, you still have access to the river. So it does, you're going to have to have parking anyhow to get down to that area. Quarry View that we're restoring, we're finding some amazing stuff and just the beauty. What we thought we were going to do, the post that first came out when we got there, they saw the equipment show up, and they were telling everybody, "It's going to be an equipment storage place," and people were going crazy. We did not know what we were going to do, and it changed. I mean, every day I go down there, I find something new, we, we get excited about it. And we are definitely thinking that whatever happens with the riverfront, that we're going to join forces with the Discovery Park, this whole area. You can't just look at this as a separate piece of property because that's the way everybody's looking at it. You're looking at a, a parking lot, you're looking at a restaurant. I'm looking at-- I'm looking at Discovery Park, riverfront. I go downtown, I see how the business is doing good. We see our area, the park, everything. It's not separate, you know, 311, 248. It's not separate properties. This is one big chunk of land that we have an opportunity to make a great place. So I'm voting for it, obviously. And people will say that we are doing it because we're going to benefit personally for the park that we're putting together. I don't believe that. We bought it, we actually bought it because I watched them build the other park. I've been around for 12 years, you just haven't seen me. And when we saw that park go together, it killed me that I couldn't help at the time. But now I'm here, and we're doing our part to make this work. Thank you.
Just watch your step on the cords if you come up, please. Frank, excuse me, Fred Naus from East Main Street. Fred?
Thank you. Especially since you have a...
Yeah, good evening. Enjoyed listening to comments tonight. I feel rather strongly about supporting the park. Jotted down several reasons why I think the town should vote for the project. I think our first electman, first select person, Susan Bransfield, mentioned some of the points, but I will be brief. The parcel, first of all, is a brownfield. We all know that. It needs to be remediated or nothing is going to happen. Property sat there for years. It's dormant, it was neglected. Understandably, the owners were out of state. And if we decide not to do anything with it, what's going to happen is that property will remain dormant. It will sit there, it will be an eyesore, a continuing eyesore, and it will be for sale for how many years? So, we have, there really is no alternative with this. The property, as far as the town is concerned, either we do something with it or it will just sit there and be neglected. If we approve the purchase of the property, some good things will happen. First of all, the property will be remediated. The environmental remediation will happen. Secondly, as far as the, besides the remediation, the potential for environmental, for recreational possibilities are going to be expanded. And as several people mentioned, very importantly, economic development has an opportunity to occur. I think back to the property that we have adjacent to this parcel, which is, of course, Riverfront Park. And the riverfront park, if we went back in time and said, "Okay, before the town purchased that park," why would the town purchase the park? What possibly could happen with the park? The park, basically, that property at the time was really an underwater parking lot for neglected vehicles. There was no revenue for the town. There was no money coming in. This proposal gives us the chance to actually take charge of the property and do some proper developments, some development that people can be proud of and accept. And in terms of, the final point being, it's really a no-brainer in my mind. Lot of possibilities, lot of great potential, and there's no reason not to do it. The town, as Susan had mentioned, there's no cost as far as remediation. Clearly, if the property, if private investors were interested in the property, you know, they would come in and have purchased it. They can't afford it, it's not feasible. They're not going to spend three-quarters of a million dollars or more to remediate and then try to develop it. So either we do something with it, or we're going to look at it in the future for who knows how long. Thanks.
Thanks. Frank Muniski, Jobs Pond Road.
I just have a few comments on the commentary. So far tonight, it was really great to hear what people have to say as far as the property is concerned. It's really interesting to hear different perspectives. One thing, one thing I wanted to just point out, having grown up in the town, my perspective on conservation is pretty acute. I think I could appreciate very much any effort, you know, as far as conservation is concerned. I've seen, growing up in Portland, you know, I've seen a lot of the open area disappear. And, you know, it's, on one hand, it's kind of unfortunate, but anywhere you live, progress is what it's called. So you're going to see things happen. And sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's less than that. But, you know, changes do occur. And in this case, you know, changes over the years have resulted in a blighted, kind of mismanaged kind of property that now, unfortunately, we can let, you know, leave it the way it is, and it'll continue to be a polluted, blighted kind of eyesore. Or, you know, we can use what we have available and deal with it and improve it. As part of the Brownstone Quarry, we worked on the riverfront park. We worked on the Brownstone quarries. All these areas were blighted, kind of polluted areas. If we leave areas like that as they are, they will remain just a polluted, nasty place that will continue to bring the town down. We addressed these kind of things in the past, and now, fortunately, we have a lot to say we made out of the deal. We could do the same thing in this case. I am, like I said, a lot for conservation, and part of that in my mind is to restore polluted property. We did that with the quarry, we did that with the riverfront park. We can do it here again. If we let it go, we're going to miss a golden opportunity. We have businesses that have benefited already from what we've done. Now we have a new business coming in, Quarry View, which is a great, great new enterprise, and I'm glad to see it there. And we'll have a lot more if we continue working along this path. And I hope we do, and I would want everyone to vote yes. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak tonight? Sean Hayes.
I'll be brief. Okay, I'm not a politician. I think last week's presentation was very good. Tonight's, guys, got even better, so, thank you. I'm not even a resident in Portland. My family originated in Portland. My mother and father bought their first home here. They had their first two children. When Ed came out, they got the hell out of town. Okay? So, not being a resident, but we are taxpayers. You know, we're probably one of the largest taxpayers in the town. But we're also developers. And for somebody to get an opportunity that this program through the state gives, the town is a once-in-a-lifetime chance. As a developer, I'm calling foul. Really? There's, it's once-in-a-life. If I, as a developer, could access that money and get the liability cut in half, or even more, I'm all in tomorrow morning. Okay? So it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we have to realize. What are the returns? Somebody brought up the returns. The returns are very clear here. Back in 2015, I think I was in this room or a room similar to it, when we talked about revitalizing the quarries themselves, the town invested over a million dollars. We're never going to get a return. Why are we doing this? What is your return? Trust me, I know. Four million dollars to the town of Portland since we opened Brownstone Quarry. Ten years, four million dollars directly, but that's not even a quarter of the story. Another almost nine million dollars in payroll to our residents. They may not be all Portland residents, but a good chunk of them are. Sorry, Mike, now you're going on the spot. Mike Currys, hired when he was 16 years old, worked with us ever since. Probably one of my longest-term employees. Now, a proud homeowner in Portland with his wife and soon-to-be children. He's not mentioning yet, but... But that is the significance. A total of 14 million dollars from a flooded quarry that had oil stains popping up from the cars underneath on a non-stop basis. Conservation? This is the ultimate conservation. This is restoring the land to a useful and productive part of this community. Now, of course, my phone shut off on me. Do we endorse the plan? Yes, we do. Wholeheartedly, and it's not just for parking. But understand, four million dollars directly to this town doesn't come without a price. Everyone benefits, not Brownstone. Got my companies confused there for a second. It is about the community, it's about that four million dollars, and you have to maintain a property to drive 100,000 customers to this community. That, by the way, the 14 million dollars doesn't even represent what the gas stations, restaurants, and every other business is seeing as a byproduct of the quarry. So it is something we have to invest in, and yes, allow parking to get that revenue stream, maintain it, and/or grow it. Do we see other businesses being a part of that? Absolutely. Do I expect the whole lot to be a parking lot? No. But we are utilizing the two southernmost lots right now that can be utilized as a capping vehicle for all of the dirty product and still have it be a very productive part of this community. Those lots would also, in the final statement on that, please understand, you have still, this is a long-range program, you have a liquid asphalt plant immediately to your south. Yes, trust me, we know it's not operating today. Okay? I stand on that street six days a week, okay? We know. But I have been told it will be operational next summer. It's not going away. So you need a buffer between that kind of industry and the recreation that we want anyways. So again, as a taxpayer, Brownstone endorses this plan wholeheartedly, and thank you for everyone's help.
Anyone else like to speak? Kim, Annie? Sure. I'm going to have the licensed environmental professional answer that question.
For investigation, yes, that's it. Yep. Now it's the... We're putting together the final remedial action plan once you own it, and then we're implementing that. Yep?
You know what, Amy, I'm going to give you the...
Yeah, sure.
You could just repeat Kim's question?
Sure. She was asking about phase one, phase two, phase three, as far as investigation, is that it? And I'm saying, yes. We put together a remedial plan. We have to finalize that once you own the property and implement it. So, when you are deciding your development, let's say you wanted, this is the one parking lot, right? Because you got Triram over here and you want the buffer. And let's say you want to keep this open space, right? We can take and consolidate contamination from another property onto one property and cap it, right? If we want to open space along the river, DEP says, "Okay, you want open space. You need four feet of clean fill so no one touches the contamination." All right, so this is zero to two. Let's take that out, even if I had some residual. There are so many things I can do that has so much potential. We're talking about a floodplain. Can we build in a floodplain? Okay, well, we raise up a portion and we lower another because we need to make flood compensation. If I consolidate on another parcel and I bring that up, you can now build on it outside of the floodplain, right? All utilities in any dwelling level, right? People have to be up out of the floodplain. So really, given the acreage, given the concerns and what I have, there are so many things I can do. I'm remediating to your development. You don't develop to my remediation. Yes. Correct. So sometimes they do have a harbor management commission. I'm going through this in Middletown now. You know, sometimes you have, you know... Okay. Okay. So I'm working with DEEP down on the Middletown riverfront, right? We want to do some cuts. We want to clean up the bank, do some bank stabilization. So they're telling me, if I want to build on Middletown's riverfront, I need to make compensation. So during my remediation, I'm making the compensation so they can add on a boathouse in Middletown. That's right. If you're in the floodway. That's right. So, for example, right across the river and doing Middletown's riverfront, their coastal jurisdiction line is 3.1. We're not going anywhere below 3.1, so I don't have to do nine months of permitting, right? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Andy. Well, as you know, within the town, we have our Economic Development Commission that works with Mary Jekerson. And we also work very closely with the state, Economic and Community Development, to know what are, not just within the town of Portland, but also the state of Connecticut, and how we can capitalize on such an investment, Kim. And I think it's, you make a valid point. And the plan of conservation and development does talk to three pillars of development. And it's Brainerd Place redevelopment, it's Main Street continued redevelopment, and it's riverfront redevelopment. And one of the things that I think is so important to our community is that...
We know that it's a national historic landmark that brings with it certain prestige and certainly importance. And we also know that the Connecticut River has always been an economic driver for this community, and I would argue for the state as a whole. So I think it's very important that all of these pieces do have cohesiveness, and the fact that these areas have already been invested upon in terms of electricity, in terms of highway, in terms of proximity to the Aragoni Bridge and Route 9, in terms of the ability to have water, sewer, and natural gas. For a town the size of 9,300 people, it's not common to have those utilities right in the heart of your downtown and in your commercial area. It's been a great plus for the town of Portland that the people that came before us had foresight to make sure utilities are in this area in order to develop them and redevelop them. As was pointed out earlier, we have a lot of pristine untouched areas in our town, proximate to the forest, proximate to other vernal pools and other areas of our town, that if this area becomes redeveloped, it may take some of the pressure off the development in other areas. And I think it's important to remember that as we go through our development plans, and it's things that our EDC and our town planner has looked at for the last 20 years or more. So I think you bring up some very good comments and points, that that cohesiveness is important, and certainly to have a redevelopment, brownfield redevelopment commission is going to be vital to this town's redevelopment because ultimately, you are the decision-makers, and I think that's why we love living in this town, that we have a say and that we can redevelop it based on the needs of conservation and based on the needs that we have for development. Other comments? Mr. Petzold?
I'd just like to say that basically I'm available to this project. It's surprising this morning that I could go to the land that's between the river and the flood, which is a media, which makes me want to access to the water. That's an area where walkers, you know, fishing and that kind of stuff, shouldn't have a problem with those kinds of things. On the other side of things, I'm very much concerned because a lot of times towns do a lot of good things that they think they're doing to find profit, and next thing you know, there's, we have all things that don't bring any tax money, that don't employ the people. It's a large part of this project that should be put out to developers. And this project is, this project is, it's fairly, not a major project, but it's a developing project.
That certainly is. Mr. Petzold, who owns Petzold Marine and has been involved... Wow. Yeah, okay, your sons own it now. Just for the record, has expressed support for the purchase of this property, and also points out the need that we recognize as a community, that this is an economic development site, that this is a money-generated, revenue-generating area for us. And I think that can be done, Bill, with the ability to conserve those areas that will be, continue to be public and access to the river in a very well-planned way. But you make a good point, that this is an area that, and I can speak as first selectman, it's very important that we develop our resources, that we recognize where revenue will come from. We know where it comes from now, and we know that this property used to produce a whole lot more revenue in terms of jobs and in terms of people that were paying taxes and so forth. We need to regenerate this area and bring it back to where we have lots of people down there, where we have jobs, where we have that revenue generation, and that's vital to our community as we grow. There's nobody else coming around to give us money. We have to plan and we have to be ready for our future to be able to run this town, and I think that this is vitally important for your consideration.
I have one question. I'm sure...
Yes.
What happens to that?
That will be part of the plan. We were recommended by our environmental professional that we, at this point, not take action on that pipe, that depending on the plans and how things go forward will dictate the proper treatment of that pipeline. There's some opportunities there because, remember, that is a pipeline that has been dug. We do have other utilities in that area, and some of our Public Works Department has some ideas for the reutilization of that trenching that has already occurred that can be very valuable to us going forward. But before we make those kinds of decisions, we need to make sure that we have a good, solid plan in place and that we certainly explore other opportunities that that gives to us. Amy, did you want to comment on that?
I did forget to mention the pipeline when I was up here before. So I did get to work with the estate and their contractors to oversee the draining of the pipeline, the testing of the pipeline. And one of the things we talked about with deep and the U.S. Coast Guard was abandoning that in place, talking with Buckeye, too. A lot of times, they fill them with concrete after they've drained the fluid and they've tested them tight. And my recommendation was, don't do that at this point. Because if you do fill it with concrete and you sell property to a developer and they come in and they have to dig up a piece of that, it's a lot more expensive to get rid of the pipe with the concrete in it. So until you actually determine your end-use of the property, long-term, with it being down the road, let's say you decide you need to put in new utilities, you can go in that pipeline route and take out the old pipeline and put your new utility right in. You've got the bedding and everything else right there. So it's manageable, and it seems fairly easy dealing with that in the future. If you decide you are leaving it in place long-term, you're never going to touch it, then my recommendation would be, along the road, fill it with concrete so it doesn't collapse in any way and you don't have settlement.
My one question is, I don't even know if it was a year ago or two years ago I sat here, but it looked like this whole thing was my right to, to fall sitting in the back of a room.
Bergeron.
What about the tightness, that changes, old scenario for a couple of years? So my question there is, with all the people who worked on that property, did test quarries and such, didn't find this, what is, was there any liability put on their back as far as, to me, now it's a couple of years or two later, a lot more expense, and if my as far as I'm concerned, it was a big mistake to me, and somebody should be paying or some adjustment should be made to the town of Portland for these kind of things, which supposedly we have, because there are credentials that are in this project, so that's right.
Yep.
But it was all a luck. I'm glad to, that this has happened.
Yep.
But then somebody has to pay for this.
Okay.
I know I have to, when I was in business.
Yeah.
It's a big mistake.
So let me address, right? Through all of our work, the phase one, everything else, right? Even from the real estate agent that was handling it, all the mapping, all the documentation, my call before you digs, that we did before we put holes in the ground, everything came back Buckeye, right? Buckeye Pipeline, the mapping through the state, everything said it was Buckeye Pipeline. It wasn't until the town did the title search in wanting to purchase the property that the easement came through on the title search. Initially, it was thought that the easement was in favor of Chevron, but it wasn't. It was in favor of Port Oil. And so that pipeline passed with the property of 248. And at that time, when that came out, you're very thankful. I was very thankful Bergeron came and pointed that out because no documentation up till that point, and I'd been on this project three years. Everything indicated the pipeline was owned by Buckeye right up to the tanks. So what we did is we did not incur cost, right? We pulled everything back, and we said to the estate, you pay to drain it, you pay an engineer to come out, and you pay to tightness test it. And that's the route we went. I encourage Susan, bring them along as far as you can, right? If this comes along with the property, we want to talk to DEP about liability protection. We want to talk to the estate about ensuring that they get a tightness test before we go any further, and that's what we did.
I think it's also important to point out that we have received additional in-kind services from Tie &amp; Bond subsequent to that particular revelation that that pipeline is part of this property. And we have, as I said, received additional in-kind services from them in light of that. These things do happen. They are things that our financial department deals with, and we certainly are making sure that we look at the situation and make the appropriate decision-making going forward. Other questions? I'll ask it three times. Any more comments? Going once, going twice, three times. Any more comments? Well, my comment is, thank you very much. As someone pointed out earlier, the information that comes from these public hearings is invaluable to all of us, and I think I learned quite a bit tonight, more than I learned last week. And hopefully, we will see each and every one of you, along with your brothers, sisters, cousins, as well as all of your neighbors and friends. We'll have plenty of room, plenty of room in the auditorium at the Brownstone Intermediate School, September 4. That's two days after Labor Day, enough time to get some rest from Labor Day. At 7:30 PM, and we hope you all come out and vote. Thank you all.